At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We want to welcome everyone here this evening. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Michael Mathis from the Mission Phil Ministries. And if you will, all please rise for invocations and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, once again, we acknowledge your sovereignty and we're just so thankful, Father, for your loving kindness, your mercy, your patience, and your long suffering with us. Your abundant grace, oh God, we thank you. And Lord, we always reminded of how frail we are and our great need to have you involved in affairs of the things that you have put us strategically in positions of leadership to execute. And so remembering that, Lord, we once again ask God that you would forgive us for anything that we've done to error. Forgive us individually and corporately. And we thank you, God, for everything that you're doing. We are so grateful, Lord, for our mayor, Jackie Warner, and her family. We ask for your continued protection, guidance, and wisdom upon her life as she goes out and come in. Not only her, Lord, but the entire board, councilmen. We thank you for their families and we pray, God, that as they serve the city of Hope Mills, that you would shield and protect them as they go out and come in, their entire families, including their children. And Lord, we are so grateful for how, in this time, very dangerous time that we live in, we have men and women that are willing, Lord, to place their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens of Hope Mills and other places here. Lord, we thank you and we call them our first responders. God, we ask God that you would first have your worrying angels assigned to their vehicles as well as at their back when they can't see what's behind them. We thank you for shielding and protecting and keeping them as they protect us and the people in this city. And Lord, we are so grateful for how you are developing the city, town of Hope Mills. And we pray, Lord, that the new development will bring about an increase in prosperity. God, as we smile on the many wonderful things that you're doing in this town, Lord, and we ask you now, even as the agenda has been set, that you would grant and endow the board once again with your abundant wisdom, Lord, to execute the things that they have on their agenda this evening. And Lord, I even go as far as saying that as we move forward and the board moves forward, Lord, that you would continue to give them revelation of the things that need to be decided on tonight pertaining to the welfare of this city. Not only revelation, I also declare that miracles would be experienced in this town of Hope Mills. And they already are, but we're looking for 2019 to be one of the greatest years ever. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I've got three items.
Okay.
Let's see. One is discussion of the Tier One status designation under new business, I guess.
Okay.
The item H, I guess. Another one would be discussion of the parish house and its demolition from our budget retreat in 2018. That probably under old business, I guess.
Okay.
On B. And then on, I guess we don't have a 7A. But under 7B, we can probably just add, like to have a discussion, add to that discussion, membership of immediate family members on same committees for citizen committees.
To make that item H, I mean item I, or put it in as A.
Or, I don't know if you want to add it to...
Make it A, since there's no A.
Okay, we'll do it.
Okay. So item A, membership.
Other than that, motion to approve unless the bills have some.
Anyone?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add an item to discuss putting an item on the upcoming workshop agenda.
Okay, so make that item.
Ma'am?
That'll be item I, under new business.
Thank you.
Workshop agenda.
So motion to approve with those amendments?
Have a motion to approve the agenda with the added amendments. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. We have a special proclamation. It's Love the Bus and Bus Driver Appreciation Week, February 11th through 15th, 2019. Whereas every day in North Carolina, over 13,000 school buses carry more than 790,000 students to and from school. And whereas without school buses and school bus drivers, many public school students would not have safe, reliable transportation. And whereas the American School Bus Council's Love the Bus Week is celebrated in North Carolina during the week of Valentine's Day. And whereas the town of Hope Mills encourages its citizens to love the bus and to recognize the excellence of our school bus drivers and their good record of safety. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim February 11th through 15th as Love the Bus and School Bus Driver Appreciation Week and commend its observance to all town citizens this fourth day of February 2019. We do not have any public hearings at this time, but we do have some public comments. And just a reminder, each public com, each speaker is asked to limit comments to three minutes, and we do have a timer. And the total comment period will be made up of all those that have signed up to speak. The first person we have up is Elizabeth Cooper.
Elizabeth Cooper, 4413 Goldenrod Court, parked in North Carolina, 28371, but I am a Hope Mills resident. At the November 5th, 2018 Board of Commissioner meeting, on or about the 25-minute mark of the meeting, Commissioner Larson states, and I quote, "The purpose of the agenda was so that everyone, all five board members, were present at the time of the proposal." Remember this part, because I will come back to it. She further states, and I quote, "It still only means the majority of the board votes whether to sell or to lease the property. Doesn't mean they have to do it that night. It could be the next meeting or two months down the road. But the initial proposal, all five board members have to be there. And that is only so no one would take advantage of a board member that was not able to come to a board meeting. So with that, I make a motion to pass ordinance number 18-9. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Hope Mills believe that the consideration of the sale or long-term lease of real property owned by the town is an issue that requires input from all elected officials. Now therefore, be it ordained, the Board of Commissioners shall not discuss or," and she paused here, "or consider the sale or long-term lease of any real property owned by the Town of Hope Mills unless the full Board of Commissioners is present for discussion. For purposes of this ordinance, long-term lease is defined as any lease longer than one year." Motion goes to vote. Edwards and Bell Flowers vote against it. Where Commissioner Larson paused in her detail of the ordinance is right where she realized she had clearly was misleading all those in attendance. She stated in her preface that it still only means the majority of the board votes. But the ordinance, as she read it, stated that the Board of Commissioners shall not discuss or pause, consider. Consider means to vote for it to be brought up at a board meeting, the sale or long-term lease. So right there is clear indication that she was misleading the public. Not only did she know what she said was misleading, but then she clearly broke her own ordinance when she and only three, 1 plus 3 equals 4, Board of Commissioners sat down and discussed, as clearly stated by Commissioner Larson, the YMCA proposal. So what are the consequences of the board members who clearly violated the ordinance? Should the town pay for another investigation? I want to know who wrote that ordinance, because it's clear Meg Larson didn't know what it meant. As tired as you all are of seeing me, I'm tired of having to hold my elected officials accountable for their actions. The ordinance and the actions of this board have clearly been do as I say, not as I do." Thank you.
Next, we have Julia Gilmore.
I am Julia Gilmore. I live at 5531 Heather Street in Hope Mills. I have a lifelong connection to Hope Mills. I spent my summers at Hope Mills Lake, Fantasy Lake. Growing up here, my brother grew up here, all his children grew here. So I'm deeply rooted in Hope Mills. I first want to, just before I get into the main one, is express my approval or desire to see YMCA come to Hope Mills. I'd like us to be known for something other than a Walmart or a service station that we're overly welcoming. I think it would be good for the economy here, is something positive for this community. I certainly would partake of it if it were here. It would benefit all the high schools, any children here. I think the YMCA wanting to come here is a very positive thing for this community. But my biggest problem with this council is when the Lone Survivor Project hit a brick wall with you. I took that very personally. I have lived here all of my life, and I know how valuable Fort Bragg is to this community, to the entire Cumberland County. And for us to be offered something of that magnitude and us for just whatever, say, "No, we don't want that." I was offended when I first saw that. I thought, why would we deny them that? What on earth would be the reason, that was a concrete reason, to deny that? And then, when I saw the allegations against the mayor and her son, I was livid. I was so offended by that. I thought our days of notoriety for discord were over. I really did. But not, not anymore. We made Raleigh News, we made Up and Coming. Has anybody read the scathing article on you? Except for the mayor and Ms. Edwards? Very unkind words, very unkind words about all of you. Who's on first was the beginning of the article, which is a comedy group. Is that really what you want to project out? I'm embarrassed. And on the other note of that, if since you're doing an external investigation into mayor and her son, how about let's doing an external investigation of the other four people who were against it to find if there's some collusion there and some personal gain? I want to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to respond to a couple of things. We are under, the whole elected board is under investigation. Not sure there's some confusion there, as well as our staff.
Good.
So I'm not sure, you know, about that. YMCA is in Hope Mills already, been here 15 years. It's just this Aquatic Center is what they're talking about.
Yes, that would be great.
Sure.
Okay, next, we have Neil Yarborough.
My name is Neil Yarborough. My address is one, the address of my office is 115 East Russell Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I come here tonight to speak on behalf of the four volunteer fire departments that border your town and service your town through mutual aid and other agreements. Those, of course, are Stony Point, Pierce's Mill, Cotton, and Cumberland Road. I also come to speak to you on behalf of myself and my neighbor, Neil Smith. The departments are terribly concerned about what they have just found out about today, that being the renewed effort to try to annex additional parts of their district into the town of Hope Mills. It's item number six on your agenda. You'll be getting to it at some point in time. Obviously, we have no, we have no opposition, we have no opposition regarding any, any real donut holes. That is, a piece of property that is 100% surrounded by the town of Hope Mills. But any type of greater expansion into either one of those four districts would cause a significant problem to the viability of these departments, which have served you for so long. The bottom line of what I would like to say is I, well, obviously, I'd like for you to abandon this thought tonight, but the second thing I'd like for you to do is to certainly keep us involved and keep us involved and keep us acquainted so that we'll have a better understanding of exactly what's going on. I can, I can tell you right now, if it's anything that expands into their districts, there's going to be 100% opposition. If there's anything that abandon, goes into Neil Smith's property or mine, there will be 100% opposition, because we don't think they're true, we don't think they're true donut holes. It's just a, it's just a land grab. So that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Greeley Mitchell.
Greeley Mitchell, 4056 William Bell Luther Drive. It's about the people. When we stand before you, we come here. Keep in mind, the decision that you make is about the people, the people that live here and around Hope Mills. But I come before you tonight to ask you all to make an exception to your policy on our veteran affairs, commission, membership. Reason why we are asking that, because we do something that no other commission or committee does. The VFW, the American Legion, we have OPL, other people's lives in our hands almost every day. Telephone calls 24 hours a day sometime, requesting assistance, information, anything that they, we can provide to help get them through that moment, that second, or that day. We are not like any other organization or commission. We partnership with other organizations around this Cumberland County community. We attend the meetings inside of Cumberland County, and we provide assistance to any veteran, not just a veteran, any family member of a veteran, or any individual that's a citizen in this community that requires our help. Nothing hurts more than for a veteran widower or the wife of a veteran to come to you and say, "I don't have anything. How do I get help?" But we reach across the aisle, we talk to one another, and we provide assistance where it's needed at. We turn no one away if we can assist them. If we can't assist them, we find someone that can. And that's what we are about. We want those two individuals, because the VFW and the American Legion is housed in Hope Mills. Those individuals, one of them actually live with a Hope Mills address, just don't have a voting right. But those individuals have voting rights, because the decisions we make are important decisions. We want them to be involved so that we can make intelligent decisions, sound decisions. And before I close, good business practices, tough decisions, tough choices is what you all have to make. But most of all, you have to make decisions that's going to be beneficial to those individuals that's going to be affected by the decisions that you make, whether it's about the veterans or whether it's about the citizens, about moving forward, how to spend this town money, and how we're going to move forward to be effective, keep from falling backwards. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Tonsi Collins.
Tonsi Collins, 5816 Wallace Drive. I'm totally against the YMCA coming to Hope Mills. I got my reasons. This land, the motion over here, this land over the golf course, I was given to the Town of Hope Mills by the Roseville about years ago for recreational purposes only. We got adequate recreation to rent over there. We got a fine town manager. We need to go over there and do like one of our commissioners has made a motion to do to open it up for walking only. This first come up about a year and a half ago, that's what I wanted. Take the congestion off this walk path over here, go to over here and put it over here. Get your easement, let's go on in. We don't need to spend no more money on that right now. We got other priorities that we need to concentrate on. Because all of you know, I was on the board for eight years. The biggest problem any board that I ever served on, and I was on, because I made a comment one time in a closed meeting. We, and this is y'all, need to do projections. You need a five, 10, 15, 20-year projection. You at the board need to make the decision along with the manager and her staff. You got a manager over there, she works for the board. Direct her, which her out, she won't hurt this town, because she is really one of the major leaders in this town. Let her get it off. We got to quit saying we're going to build this at the museum, we're going to do this at a portion, we're going to do this and do that. Nobody's planning nothing. Our training room, they got back over at the police department, it's been there since the early ages, I know, because I was one of the major players in getting it over there. There hasn't been nothing done over there at that PD, nothing hardly done at the fire department. But I know there ain't been nothing done to PD, and that building was built in 1986. But getting back to the YMCA, when I was a little boy, I used to go to YMCA down on Bow Street over in Fayetteville. My mother had seven of us. We didn't have no money, we lived on this, that, food, everything, but we all done good. They sponsored me to go to the YMCA. I swam down there, played basketball, done everything, went to camp and everything. We had sponsors. The YMCA, far as I know, are doing nothing for the underprivileged children. That's what the YMCA, in my opinion, Young Men Christian Association, they would help underprivileged children in this county. Not just in Fayetteville, but the whole Cumberland County. I remember cats, Matty, he'll go in the camp with me. I don't want to see YMCA come over here and try, and I know how to work, take over our parks. We got good staff here, we can handle it. We need to do it. That's all I got to say about it. But I recommend to all of y'all to get together. There's a lot of junk being rolled up and coming, of course, we know about that fake news. Thank God Trump's in office, he took care of a lot of it. But anyway, get away. Get in there, y'all sit down as a board. Don't cut each other's throat. I know who cuts throats on this board here and who don't cut throats, but you can't worry about that. You better quit it, because the ones you're not looking after, you're not looking after the people that voted you in. You got 295 coming out here at the bypass, right out here. If you don't get to work on that and start planning, you're going to lose some money. There's some big-time businesses going to come out this way. Neil Smith, Neil Yarborough, and all them cats, they can tell you what's going on out there. A lot of them ain't going to tell you. But you better get to planning, because you don't plan it, you're going to get lost. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda. If there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we can do so. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the January 22nd, 2019 regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the January 7th, 2019 special meeting. Consideration of approval of the closed session minutes from the December 3rd, 2019 regular meeting. Consideration of the purchase of 196-gallon trash cans needed for new residents and replacements for containers no longer serviceable. Funds are available in the current budget. Consideration of a third-party encroachment agreement between NC DOT, the property owner, and the town related to sidewalk maintenance at proposed Circle K gas station at Rockfish and Main Streets. Consideration to approve Resolution 2019-04, accepting the report of unpaid taxes and charging the tax collector to advertise the tax links. Is there anything you'd like moved? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If we have to remove it to discuss it.
Yes, sir.
We subcontract our sanitation out?
These are for yard waste containers, yeah.
Yard waste, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good enough, thank you.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So do we.
I have a motion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. First thing, under old business, is consideration of request to set a workshop to discuss recommendations from the Town of Hope Mills Plan Review Committee on Proposed Donut Hole Annexations. And this is behind tab seven, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor and fellow board members. I'd like to keep this as brief as possible, but over the last, since last year, our plan and review, our plan review team has been engaging the legislature with respect to addressing donut holes in the town of Hope Mills. So what we've been doing is studying, what you have in your packet, is six major areas that we're looking at. When we initially presented this, the board did adopt the Resolution 2018-03 last year. And at that time, we indicated that our initial recommendation would be to avoid areas with no established water and sewer services, avoid areas with established development, developed subdivision, and avoid areas with no unimproved roads. So what you have in your packet is a brief outline or a brief description of the six areas and maps that go along with it. But what we wanted to do tonight is just set the actual workshop, because this is a very, very, very extensive conversation. I'm still compiling the report, and right now, it's about at 50 pages. So with the amount of data, and we're approaching this in the same way we approach any annexation, where you're going to have a detailed amount of data and recommendations from every department. Even the conversation that Mr. Yarborough was talking about before, we have recommendations from fire on each one of these areas. We have recommendations from police, stormwater, planning, PWC, all agencies that we deal with. And the goal is to basically provide you with those recommendations and allow you to determine which areas you want us to proceed with. So tonight, I just wanted to basically give you guys an opportunity, because I told the town manager, I did not think that we could probably have this discussion at a regular hearing, and that we should set a workshop for us to really get really, really detailed and in-depth into the discussions.
Do you have a timeframe that you're looking at to have it ready, to set that date, or is there a certain time, Ms. Adams? Do we have any kind of...
I think we need to get, if we're going to move forward, I think we need to get something to the General Assembly in March.
Yeah. I think, I don't know what the exact date is.
I am not sure the exact date.
But it's not like I'm asking for another two or three months. We've been working on the report for quite some time.
Yeah.
I'm just simply saying that I think it's much too lengthy of a conversation to have during a regular agenda item, as a regular agenda item. So I think maybe a couple of weeks or some, it definitely should be set in February. I definitely don't think I need at least another month.
Could it be before our next meeting? Could we do it an early time before our next meeting? Because I know we've got two meetings coming up, the sign ordinance meeting and the meeting with historic committee. Those are commissions. We got those two set for the 5th and the 11th, and is there another one in there, too?
13th is the historic preservation.
Okay. So there's three coming up.
Um...
Is there anything on that, our regular meeting, that we can back it up?
On the 18th, well, you've got your youth leadership at 6:00. We could start at 5:00 and feed you all and just work straight through. I think it's going to take longer than an hour.
I can't do it at 5:00 that day.
Okay. It's going to take more than an hour, so, I think.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Chancellor, is the staff reports completed in support of all these areas?
I'm actually literally, I'm almost maybe 90% complete, getting all the recommendations from the different departments.
Okay.
So I think the 18 conflicts, that's not an issue, but that's one reason why I do not want you guys to think that we're talking about another month. Anytime within the next couple of weeks, I think we'll be, that's more than enough time for us to, for me to finalize it. But some of the different agencies, it's a lot easier to provide this information, but agencies just like Public Works, they have to actually go out and actually study the condition of roads and things of that nature. And just if you're looking at the area, the acre, just 2,700 acres.
Oh, yeah.
So we've been working on it for quite some time. We are very, at the very end of finalizing information. So anytime within the next couple of weeks should be more than enough time to get everything together.
After, I'll just say after the mid-month of February.
Then that should be fine.
We should be good with all the staff reports.
Yeah.
That's the only, that's the only question I have, Mayor.
Okay, the 15, what, Ms. Adams, you have any dates over there? Okay, the 15, what, Ms. Adams, you have any dates over there?
Well, the week of the 18th, you know, we've got, on the 20th, we have the dinner in Raleigh with our representatives. But that Tuesday and that Thursday are open.
That'd be February the 19th?
Or the 21st. Then the later you get down into the rest of the month, then you're running into committee meetings, pretty much.
What's that?
Parks and Rec is on the 25th, Appearance on the 26th, Veterans on the 28th, so.
And I would caution.
You can meet on the 19th? That's Tuesday.
5:30?
How would that work for you, Mayor Protem?
5:30 on the 19th? We'll provide some sandwiches.
Okay, so February the 19th at 5:30?
Yeah, that should be more than enough time.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion that we use February the 19th at 5:30 to have the discussion as requested with the planning committee.
Okay, so, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Chancellor?
Yes, ma'am.
When we had the workshop, is that going, are you gonna invite the other fire departments and everybody that was talking about it a while ago?
Well, the initial approach is just to allow you guys to ask every individual department about their respective recommendations. Because we're all looking at this through completely different lenses. What may be amenable through zoning may be a major issue for police. What may be okay for police may be a major issue for fire. So I do think with the conversation Mr. Yarborough was talking about, I do think our fire department is more than adequate. But if they feel that any other agencies need to be involved, because some of the outside agencies we're dealing with right now is PWC, because there's a very crucial aspect of water and sewer installation on our half behalf that'll kick in if we move forward with any of these areas. So I can make sure that there as well. So the main goal is just to make sure that you guys get an opportunity to review the report and to ask us questions on our recommendations, so that we can, maybe we move forward with, you guys will determine which one of these you ultimately feel that we should consider, if any. But I do think any agency that would allow you to kinda get the amount of feedback that you need to be able to make that decision, I think that's paramount.
Thank you. And then I think we'd have to have a public hearing.
Yes.
Before you can move forward anyway. So after the recommendations are made, you still would have to hold a public hearing.
And at that workshop, I will have.
For the General Assembly?
Probably would have to tie it into a special.
That work session that we'll have, I will pretty much begin it with that process. There's an extensive process of a resolution of intent and things of that nature, certain maps and things of that nature. And I think there's a second process after a bill is introduced by the state that allows us time to do a study in terms of engineering calculations and things of that nature. Because there's a significant amount of dollars that have, that are tied to some of these areas that we need to be able to hire engineering firm or reputable firm to be able to calculate how much that's gonna cost.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I may not have said that motion right. It's supposed to be, the motion is to schedule that date, the 19th at 5:30 for the meeting with the Hope Mills Plan Review Committee, not the Plan Committee.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor to have our meeting at 5:30 on February 19th for the review.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next thing we have is an item that was added, and that's discussion of the Parsonage House. And in reference to what took place at our budget retreat or budget workshop last year, I think. And I guess.
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Back in, when we had our budget workshop on March 3rd, 2018, we made a motion to demolish the parish house and at least to have a budget for that demolition and the engineering fees for design of a parking lot in that area. And it's, of course, the Hope Mills Preservation Commission would like to preserve that building. And so I'd like to make a motion to rescind that motion. It was a 5-0 vote. We were all on the prevailing side. And so I'd just like to make a motion that we rescind that motion from the budget workshop for now until we hear more from the Historic Preservation Commission at our meeting. I think it's in February 13th or something like that.
That meeting's February 13th?
February 13th, yes.
Any discussion?
I'd like for us to have the meeting with the Historic Committee before we rescind this, to see what they have to say. Cause right now, we're gonna, we're gonna demolish it. And I think Historic Preservation wants to save it. So I'd rather hear what they have to say before we do it with this one.
Okay, any other discussion in reference to that?
If I understand his motion correctly, he's wanting to withdraw, change the vote. Is that correct?
Rescind it, yes.
Rescind it. So we're not looking to tear it down. We're just the opposite.
Correct. And we can make a motion once we've heard from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Right.
For something different, if that's the will of the board.
Is that, any other discussion? The motion was made by Mayor Protem Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Bellflowers, and carried unanimously to budget for the demolition of the parish house and engineering fees for design of the parking lot in the 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget. So if that's, we rescinding the entire.
Entire motion.
Entire motion. So I have a motion to rescind the motion that was done March 3rd, 2018. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so it would be a four to one rescinding that motion. Okay, the next thing is under new business, and that would be the added A, membership of committee members as far as being related. And I'll turn that over to Mayor Protem Mitchell.
Yeah, I'd just like to visit, don't think in our policies that we have anything prohibiting immediate family members from being on the same committee, citizen committee. And not against immediate family members serving on different committees, but I think it is, and empowers one family too much to be sitting on one committee, given the fact that each member is allowed to vote. So I would like us to either revisit that policy or go ahead and amend it right now, that immediate family members cannot serve on the same citizen committee. I'm not aware that we have anybody currently.
We, I think we've had, the Clarks were both on the committee. The Mauries were both on the same committee. I'm trying to think, there's another pair.
Appearance Commission, the one lady and her husband, she was very active with it, as a matter of fact.
Do we have anybody currently? I don't think we have anybody currently.
I think, didn't Ms. Maury resign?
She, yeah, Ms. Maury has resigned, yes.
But I don't know, is that something you do?
I'm not aware of any other family members currently serving jointly on the same committee right now.
And that's just immediate family members, husband, wife, children. Same household, I guess you'd say. So that would be my motion, if that's allowable. Attorney Hart, so. Okay, then that's my motion.
Okay, so your motion would state that, do you wanna go back over that motion?
That immediate family members of the same household cannot serve on the same citizen committee. But they can serve on different committees.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, any discussion?
I would like to mention.
Yes.
That the couple that worked on the Appearance Commission, if it hadn't been for that couple working together and all the beautiful things that they did, I mean, they got awards for it and everything. And I know why this is coming about, but we've had a lot of husband and wife sisters, two sisters working together. They would be spouses, brothers and sisters, we've had those before. So I don't, I don't see why we couldn't, a lot of times they can work better together than they can apart. And we're having a hard enough time getting help.
Actually, brothers and sisters wouldn't be a conflict, I'm just saying with an immediate.
They are immediate, oh.
Immediate household.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Did you wanna say something, Commissioner Weg?
Yeah, but I'm not sure what it is yet. Brothers and sisters not immediate family? Is that what you're saying?
Of the same household, in the same household.
Okay. In the same household.
And we don't have any jurisdiction over the youth association, so that would not be a conflict there.
Had nothing in mind over there.
Well, I was just thinking that was probably crossing your mind.
Yep.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is a hard one. Because we have a tremendous amount of volunteers that step forward and to serve on all of our committees. It really is. It's a tough one. The nominating committee nominates volunteers to the board for approval. And I would think that if there was an issue with someone that was volunteering on a committee, then the nominating committee would nominate that person for board consideration and approve. I just, the problem I have is restricting our volunteers. I just do. I feel strong about that. That we don't honor our volunteers enough. It's a thankless job for folks to spend time on committees as it is. Sometimes a husband and wife team, or a husband and husband, or a wife and wife work well together on committees. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just say volunteerism has nothing to do with being an official member of a committee. My wife is not a member of the Historical Preservation Commission, but yet she picked up the phone. She had over $200 worth of door prizes for the Historical Preservation Old Mill Days. My wife has been on, as a volunteer only, not on any committee, has done various paperwork, brochures, different things. Volunteerism is a state of mind, state of heart. It has nothing to do with the title.
Yeah.
And I know that Ms. Waring serves on the Lake Advisory Committee along with her husband. But she's not a member, she takes minutes, I think, but I mean, she's there. So that's another husband and wife team that is on a committee. Maybe she would be like your wife, be a volunteer, but that is another time that that happens, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Right after Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Weg.
The problem, Commissioner Bellflowers, as a member of that nominating committee, we have no guidelines.
Yeah.
Something like this may help. May help us sort the problems out. What we need to do is concentrate on people that working in harmony with the board. And that might be a motion forthcoming to having somebody not being named a committee because they don't work in harmony with this board. Not in particular one or two, three people, but everybody. But I see where Mayor Protem is coming from.
Madam Mayor, I understand that. It's just, it's just hard to me, because of how I feel about community folks serving on committees. Because honestly, we need to seriously consider establishing another committee, an Economic Development Committee with I-295. We really seriously need to put that committee together. Because that planning process is here, and it's now, and it's in front, and it's coming. It's a train that is on the track, and it is coming to our community.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and that motion by Mayor Protem Mitchell. I'll call for the vote at this time. All those in favor to limiting the membership of committees to one member of an immediate household, is that?
Per committee.
Committee? Okay. Or commission or committee? Okay, all those, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so it's a three to two. Okay, next, consideration discussion of Board of Adjustments' membership. And again, this was requested by Mayor Protem Mitchell.
Right. I think that the Board of Adjustments has been very active with some hearings regarding variances and other matters. I really feel like our Board of Commissioners don't need to be serving in that capacity. I think we need to exit stage left, and if we got to recruit a Board of Adjustments, then that's what we need to do. But we don't need to be the Board of Adjustments and the Board of Commissioners as commissioners. That's just my opinion.
And I think we can address that to Mr. Hartzuck, because I believe when the board was changed to become the Board of Adjustment, there was good reasoning for that. And I know I'm not a member of that, so.
If I recall correctly, I believe it was an issue with getting members to serve, cause it's a board that meets relatively infrequently. And it was a matter, it was a question of whether, you know, you could get enough people to be on the committee. But it's permissible either way. It's not uncommon to have the board serve in a dual role as Board of Adjustment. It's also not uncommon to have a separate Board of Adjustment. So it really is the will of the board. As to how y'all wanna do it.
Would it be appropriate for this to be something for us to pursue with the new board that would be coming in, or the board in November, instead of changing it midstream? Especially since this board has listened to more probably cases than any previous Board of Adjustment. Because I know the concern previously was that when they did have a need for a Board of Adjustment, they couldn't get a quorum. It held up some actions because of that. And so this way, this board in particular has just had more cases than previously. Usually, I think if there was one case within a term, that might have been, you know, unusual for, because that's the reasoning behind it. So my thoughts on this, and again, would be since this is what we've been doing, would we want to continue this and make this as a recommendation for next time? So that you wouldn't change it midstream for effectiveness right now? I mean, I don't have a vote in this, that's just a thought. Cause I know anytime you change something like that, then you've got cases that you've already heard that, you know, there might be some question if we bring it back up.
I don't believe there's any cases that are pending before the Board of Adjustment at this point. So I don't think from a legal perspective, it would be an issue with bringing a new board in, because they'd be coming in on a new case that the current Board of Adjustment as constituted has not heard. Certainly, if you had a case that had been held open, you would wanna wait until after that. You wouldn't want one board to hear part and the other board to hear the other part. But it's, I mean, that's a consideration for the board, but it wouldn't be a legal issue.
Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
One of the problems I see with this board being the Board of Adjustment, is it fair to the people bringing the case? Cause if this board votes 5-0 to go one way or the other, then their chances of getting that case passed are slim of none without a recommendation from a neutral board. So.
Presumably, as the Board of Adjustment, when you're hearing cases, you're hearing it as a neutral decision maker who hasn't made up their mind.
As you're probably.
Would be the requirement for the board.
As you're probably well aware, that's one of the few boards that we can't overrule. That board tells us what to do, you know, more or less. So I can see both sides there. Because it's a question in my mind of the ethical way to do it. That's all, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
We got 16,500 people living here. We can't get five people to serve on the Board of Adjustments.
Last, yeah, last, last time when I started in 2011, there was, there, I believe there was a full board, and then one by one, they dropped off, they resigned. And I think we had at one point, three members, at one point, four members. We kept advertising, we kept trying to recruit. And then when it came to the decision, we had some cases coming up and came to the decision that we, we didn't have a.
We had one case.
We had one case.
About five months.
That was held up, yep, that's right.
Because we, when I first was engaged, I'd been here about a year. And I started looking into it, because maybe we just didn't have board. All of the members were deceased. And once we had a case, it was filed, it took us six months, because we didn't have an ordinance that was updated. So in the ordinance, it does state that this board is the Board of Adjustment until they see fit. So I think the conversation you guys are having is valid, is when. But the ordinance is written in a way that understands that this isn't the normal method, but it gives you the, the authority to choose a new board. But I do think that what's going to be paramount is making sure we keep a, an active board. It may be a little challenging, but the alternative is a little bit scary where we are in a situation where we don't have an active board in that case.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
How many have to be present if, for the, a Board of Adjustments meeting?
The fact that it's quasi-judicial nature which means, is, is also a key component, because it means that the votes have to be.
At least how many people have to be present?
Majority.
Four, okay. Could, could the, since the mayor is, does not typically vote, could she be like the alternate if one were to be absent, so that, you know, in, in that case? In order to make a.
I don't see why you couldn't do that. I know another option that I've seen in some towns is you have the board plus two or three other members to give a different perspective. That's another option, if you, if you want more of an out, you know, you know, not just the board itself, but more other people on the board to consider.
Okay, I think five was the number they chose, but I don't think it has to be five. It could be more, just trying to get the numbers together.
Well, you want it, you don't want, you want an, an odd number, so that you're not, you're not having even splits.
Right.
You want to have a majority of each, every decision. You can't, you can't have four, because if it splits two to two, that doesn't work.
Well, then, could we have alternates that are citizens? Alternate number one, alternate number two?
I believe you could. I will double check on that, but I don't see why you couldn't do that.
The ordinance does outline what you have to, you have to be a resident, thanks that makes sense.
Yeah, it has training.
I mean, they'd be pre-designated and go through the training with the new Board of Adjustments, if that's the will of the board. I can understand the towns that have population of 500, 1,500, that the Commissioners serve as a Board of Adjustments. But we've got way too many citizens here. You know, I was sitting in that audience with Greeley Mitchell, and the mayor called us out one night, and the next thing we knew, we was on the grant committee. And we were very active. You know, if you ask folks, they will serve.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we at least advertise to see if there's interest in the community?
I think the.
Can we do, can we take that step first?
I think we can. I think the.
And advertise.
Yeah, I think the main concern with the Board of Adjustment is exactly that, is you put a citizen up here making decisions, and their neighbors might be involved. And I think that was the, the one person I recall that, that stepped down. That was their issue. You know, they felt like they were catching it from all sides. And that was that, probably that same issue that was up a few months, I mean, a couple years back. But either way, I, I think you can, could advertise for interest without doing anything, right?
I don't see why you.
That's my recommendation.
And that, and that might be a reason to have alternates. You know, if someone does.
Yeah. Let's just see how much interest there is.
I think the Board of Adjustment has alternates now. I mean, when we had it, they held, had alternates.
Okay, so.
Can we just table?
Did you make a motion down there?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so your motion would, your motion would be that we try to seek anyone that would be interested in serving on the Board of Adjustment?
Put it out for our talking.
Yeah. Just advertise interest, community interested, if anybody that wants to serve on the Board of Adjustment.
And I guess that would have to detail what that means. And they also would have to have the training, because that's the other part of it.
As an alternate, or are we setting up a whole new Board of Adjustment?
A whole new board.
At this point, you're just seeing if there's interest in serving.
Let's just go with the interest.
If there's any interest of anyone to.
Then let's advert, let's go with 60 days.
I would, I would like to know, too, it's a great opportunity, because we're talking about holding on, making this decision until November. We have Citizens Academy coming up. That's 15 citizens in Hope Mills, and we can almost pitch the idea to.
Right.
I think the crucial point is the board training that you guys have to, had to have anyway, anybody that comes on the board would have to have that training. But as we have our Citizens Academy coming up in April, that's an opportunity to see if we can find five interested.
Right. And I do, I do not have a problem serving. If somebody wants to step aside, it was just decided to make it a five-man board, because that's what we'd had in the past. And so the mayor was the one that stepped back from that. But I don't have a problem serving. So if it, if there is a need, I can be plugged back in. And that, that way, we could do it that way also.
We could also check with our previous graduates from the Citizens Academy. For my other, how many we have now, three, four? Four?
Three, I think, yeah.
From those groups?
We didn't have enough interest in fall.
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have one this past fall.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and that is to advertise for anyone that would be interested in serving on a Board of Adjustment. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed, none opposed, so it's five oh.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing we have is consideration of Parks and Recs Committee Recommendation for Board of Commissioners to Discuss YMCA Proposal to Partner with the Town.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Larson, as she's the liaison for Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Okay. First, I want to address the ordinance with our attorney, because there were three Commissioners that were present at the meeting. But there was no discussion with those Commissioners and the YMCA. They sat in the audience, just like everybody else that attended that meeting. So I just wanted you to clarify that that is not how that ordinance works. There was not an official offer made or proposal made. It was more of an introduction of interest in wanting a partnership with the town of Hope Mills.
Right. The, the way the ordinance is, is written, it, it applies to the Board of Commissioners. The board, as a board, can't discuss or consider the sale or lease, long-term lease of property, without all members being present. Attending a meeting where something is discussed would not be covered by that ordinance.
Okay. We did hear from the YMCA, and the Recreation Committee recommended the Board of Commissioners that further information be gathered, and for the Board of Commissioners to take this item under consideration, however they deemed appropriate. We did hear that they own 20 acres on our golf course. They would prefer to have road frontage property. But nothing of detail was discussed in that matter with, with them. More just kind of opening the door for discussion between the town and the board about an aquatic center. Obviously, you know, with our surveys that we've done, we've seen that the pool, water were, water splash pads and things like that are very popular with the people of Hope Mills. But they were just, you know, approaching the idea to bring to us our discussion. However, the board feels the direction we should go in.
I, I think from, based on what I got from the minutes, is that they voted that we set up a committee. And so my thoughts on that would be if it would be the willing of the board to set that committee up. And that committee could be made up of one of our Commissioners that would like to be a part of that committee. Mr. Hope, Haupt, possibly one of our staff, someone from the school system, which I think Dr. Connerly would be more than happy to submit someone to do that. And then someone from the county Commissioners, which I believe that Commissioner Adams would be willing to do that also. So that way, you'd have a committee based up on other funding sources. Because we know that the school system, we have three high schools, and we know the school system would greatly need the aquatic facility for swimming competition. They're now having to go different places, because they aren't being able to use Fable State any longer. And we do have a swim team at all three of our high schools. The other thing would be the county Commissioners, I believe that this would be something that they potentially would partner with us, because this would be something that we could ask for some funding from them to help. Because again, this would serve all of Comon County. So my recommendation would be that we have a member of the Parks and Rec Committee, we have a member of our board, we have a member from the YMCA, and I, I say Mr. Haupt, I don't know if, if he would want to recommend someone else, someone from the Comon County School System, someone from our staff, and someone from the county Commissioners. And that way, if, if we can be in conversation with everybody that would have a vested interest in it, it might mean that it would be, feasibility could, could, it might be something that they determine it's not feasible. But thoughts on that, because I know the Parks and Rec Committee, based on the minutes I read, requested that we form a committee to further study this.
Madam Mayor, do you have a, a list of names? Because what I was thinking that the acting Parks and Recreation Director should be involved with that.
Okay, I just put Parks and Rec Committee, and I didn't know who that would be, as far as who y'all would want to recommend from the committee, and who would have.
I would recommend, recommend Maxie Dove to be a member of that.
All right, so Maxie Dove, would, would you be willing to serve on that committee? Thank you. And then from the board, do we have a board member that would be willing to serve?
I will.
I think I'd be Parks and Rec Liaison, Commissioner Larson.
All right, Commissioner Larson.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are we in discussion now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here's five of us.
I agree with, with the committee. I just think we're premature with, with any committee, forming any committee until after the comprehensive recreation plan is fully presented to the board and the public. And I say that because another organization presented to the committee as well, and that would be the Swamp Dogs. So if we're going to do a committee for one, we should do a committee for every organization that comes before the committee and presents.
But I just brought that up because it was recommended by the committee, that they didn't recommend that, or wasn't said.
I know that, Mayor.
They recommended that for the Swamp Dogs.
I, I, I got it, Mayor, I, I do. But I just, I feel strong that we shouldn't be forming any committee until after that comp plan is presented. That's just my thought.
Well, we're using, that is, that's going to be another time waster, because we've got people that are interested, and we could be doing the legwork. It doesn't mean that what they bring back, you have to approve. It just means the conversations are started. Because the longer we wait, and the plan comes in, we've, we've allowed time to go by. And that's, I think that right now is something that if, if nothing more, if they're willing to serve, and the interest is there, yes, ma'am?
I, I agree with Commissioner Bellflowers. I think it's premature until it comes back to hear from it. I, I do think we're also looking at mineral rights on the property, on both property owners' property, that needs to be investigated also. That was not brought up, you know, of course, the, the Parks and Rec Committee was not aware that, other than the town property, mineral rights are, are owned on both of those parcels of property. So I think it's wise that we wait for McAdams to come back as well.
And that presentation from McAdams is going to be on February the 11th, is that not right?
Next Monday.
The first, and then that goes to Parks and Rec, and then.
That's the first that's going to be come back?
That's, it, that, the purpose of that meeting is for them to kind of get you all up to speed of where they are, where they're tracking with their recommendations. It's not their final recommendations.
So it's going to be something else that's going to hold us up from making any future plans?
They're, they're hoping to, to have their final recommendation at our board retreat in March.
That's a month away, Mayor. I mean, we're, we're here. I mean.
I have no problem. You, you, you make the decisions. I just believe that if you've got a possibility that you could investigate, so that when your time is right, you would be able to move forward if it was something good.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
With the Swamp Dogs' presentation, they were wanting us to first to land in the money. The YMCA has land over there.
Yep.
They may want road property, but as happened with the Lone Survivor, I'm not going to support anything if we have to give up town land that's not mine. It belongs to the residents, so I can't vote to give it up, especially when they already had 20 acres over there.
Oh, I, I'm with you, Commissioner Legg. It's just, I was just looking at a fairness issue, that's all. That we, we don't do any committees until after that comp plan comes in regardless.
Okay, well, if, right now, right now, the aquatics is what has been brought up by the surveys that were done. Granted, I don't believe that you were in favor of, of those survey results, so at this point in time, I can't, with the powers that be, I can appoint a committee if I would like to, but I will not appoint a committee, even though it was based on the recommendation of Parks and Rec. So at this point in time, I guess your wishes are to not discuss this any further. Is that true? I mean, is that it?
Until after, until after the.
And that, until after the plan comes back, which is going to be after March 9th?
Mayor Warner?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see a reason why we couldn't go ahead and let them discuss it. I mean, we're not making any definite arrangements, but at least we'd have that out of the way, so we wouldn't have to wait and, and do it all over again. I mean, we're not making any final commitments on anything. But at least we could hear what they had to say. Because I wasn't at the meeting, so I, I don't know what was discussed or anything.
Well, I'm, I'm just also thinking that if there's other funding sources, the time to put those ideas in people's ears are going to be while they're preparing their budgets for the upcoming year. And if we wait too long, there won't be any, any hope of getting some funding from other sources. But if it's the will of the board, we'll just wait. And is that a motion to wait until after March 9th? Is that the, what you would like to do? Either one of you want to make that motion, that we just?
Well, if we don't bother with anything, it carries over anyway, right?
Well, I, I was just going with Parks and Rec Committee recommendation.
Was that your motion?
I'll just defer to the, to the liaison, Madam Mayor.
Though, I'll make that motion that we wait until the, the comprehensive plan comes back.
Okay, so we have a motion that we wait to do any kind of discussion until after the plan comes back. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, four to one. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is non-public hearing case 19.007, consideration of the Alveda's Coffee Shop, C-1P Site Plan Review, Hope Mills Zoning Ordinance Zone, C-1P, acreage point nine four, located at 6428 Camden Road, Service Road 1003, submitted by Father Al Hope, is she? Did I say it close? Thank you, sir. Okay, I turned it over to Mr. McLoughlin. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. McLachlan.
As stated, this is case 19.007, which is a site plan approval. You see this subject property outlined in blue. And this is the site plan. As you can see, this is an existing building and the current proposal anticipates utilizing one half of it in a 30 by 45 area. Overall, the site is a 0.94 acre tract at intersection of Rockfish Road and Camden Road, addressed at 6428 Camden Road. There's an existing vacant structure, as you can see there. They used to operate as a convenience store with gasoline cells. The applicant is proposing to use a portion of it for a coffee shop. The remaining portion of it of the building will remain vacant, but any use of that portion would also have to come through this process as well. The subject property fronts 326 feet along Camden and 328 feet along Rockfish Road. And they currently have PWC water. The sewer is tied to a septic system. The proposed coffee shop anticipates 14 customer parking spaces. And just as a side note, we did pass that new amendment to the subdivision ordinance for sidewalks, creating those new thresholds. And as such, sidewalks will not be required on this proposal as it is the utilization of an existing commercial structure. And as with site plan approvals, the burden of proof is to determine if it's in compliance with existing zoning regulations. And staff has concluded that that is true. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions for Mr. McLachlan?
Yes.
Commissioner Legg?
Why would sidewalks not be required?
The ordinance that we just passed at the last board meeting, we put forth thresholds. It stated that if there is a proposal moving forward, that's a site plan approval utilizing an existing commercial structure. And in those instances where there is not any new construction proposed or any construction of that existing structure that exceeds 50% of the overall size of the structure, then sidewalks would not be required, but that would only apply to commercial development.
And that's not commercial?
Yes, this is commercial, so this would apply to commercial development.
And DOT going through there with the new road, is that building going to be torn down?
DOT has preliminary plans. We've seen several reiterations of that. We did investigate this and DOT receives requests for comments at the same time that we do. The Plan Review Committee, I think we commented on this about a month ago. At that time, the only request the county has is to take whatever feedback they receive from those outside agencies. And as I was informed today, the response from DOT was no comment. In that they're about two years out from this particular design and realignment of this intersection. In the event that the comment from DOT had been something that was adverse, the county would have had the authority to stop processing it. But with DOT indicating to us that they didn't really have any issues with this proposal at this time, we did advise, I know the county advised them and I contacted the applicant several times just to make sure they were aware that there's a proposed realignment coming. But that's really a gamble on their end from a zoning standpoint. We're only charged with determining if this proposal is in compliance with the current zoning district.
Okay. If they bring that road through there, say in two years, if the business is established there and they have to buy it to tear it down, isn't that going to be a loss to our state taxpayers?
That, the way I would address that is that anything of that nature would be something that would be a gamble on behalf of the property owner and the business. There's nothing based on, again, the jurisdiction that I have under zoning classifications and what you guys have under the ordinance with respect to this request. Those are things that we really can't factor into.
That would really be an issue between the property owners and DOT at the time.
I understand that part. I understand what you're saying. Okay, let me go to this point. How deep is the lot? You've got 151 and 175.
Technically, it's 350 and 328. The 175 you see is a 175 plus 151. So the area along Camden, I think the total frontage along Camden is 326 and it's 328 along Rockfish.
Okay, so if something happened to him to tear it down, he could move back and build another one.
That depends on what ultimately happens with right-of-way dedication for DOT. And as I said, the only thing we have is a very, very, very rough sketch and an indication from DOT that they're at minimum about two years out and that they don't even have any definitive information. So we don't know if those plans are changed or what the right-of-way dedication would be to even determine how it would affect this particular development.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Tying into the sewers at their expense, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it is in the town, so it wouldn't trigger anything with annexation or anything like that.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the site plan review for case number 19-007.
I have a motion to approve. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next thing is discussion approval of Veterans Affairs Commission voting changes and advertising changes as requested by Commissioner Bellflowers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Board members, in your packets, you have a background information regarding this motion that was discussed at the most recent Veterans Affairs Commission meeting last week on January 24th, where the commission members voted unanimously to recommend to the Town Board of Commissioners the following actions for discussion. And that would be the exception to policy to allow the VFW. That would be Veterans Foreign Wars and the American Legion Liaisons, who are currently Veterans Affairs Commission non-voting members because of their individual Hope Mills addresses. The opportunity to vote on agenda items that come before the commission. That's item one. Item two is approval of the Town of Hope Mills Facebook page. The administration writes regarding establishing and setting up a Facebook page for the Veterans Affairs Commission. The two individuals from the VFW is Bill Green and from the American Legion is John Cook. And without any question, this commission is a very, very active commission. There was a lot of things discussed at this meeting that I'll go over in the liaison report, which is coming up soon. But, and then there's another, I understand, another opportunity from the DAV would like to have a representative to serve on this commission as well. And so it's become a very popular commission that serves all of our community's veterans and their family members, regardless if they live in Hope Mills or the Hope Mills MIA with the events that occur here in the town. We don't restrict any events to just residents of Hope Mills. Our events are open to any and all veterans and their families, regardless of where they live. So my motion tonight before the board is the exception to policy to allow the VFW and American Legion Liaisons the opportunity to vote on matters, to have voting rights on the commission and to establish a Facebook page for the Veterans Affairs Commission. That's my motion, ma'am.
Has there any discussion?
Commissioner Bellflowers, would that put you at eight voting members currently?
It's more than that.
Well, that would put us at nine.
Well, one's an open membership. And one's an empty seat, right? So if everybody came, it'd be eight voting members right now. And would one of those liaisons take the empty seat that's there now?
It could. We could do that.
Or you want it to be nine members?
We wanted it to be nine members. Yeah, we want it to stay at nine.
Uh huh, uh huh, gotcha.
Yeah. And proving these two would do that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, they're all in Hope Mills and the veterans, I mean, we've done enough harm to the veterans. I think we ought to pass this.
Okay, so any other discussion?
I just want to make sure we're not doing something against what we just did a little ago. Or talked about doing.
I mean, the president of the chamber could be a non-resident, but do we make the chamber resident a member of some committee?
Are we talking about these individuals having voting rights?
We're talking about the VFW and American Legion. That's the two we're talking about.
Are you talking about the organization or these individuals?
These individuals.
These individuals specifically. So if they were to leave the committee, then the next person would need to be a Hope Mills resident as we are going forward?
I think they're both officers in their organizations, correct?
They both are.
So the office would be what would be the position on the committee? The office from those two organizations, VFW?
It's the liaison position that would have voting, the voting rights, the liaison position.
The reason I'm asking is, I understand that they've been on for a long time, on your Veterans Commission. But we have liaisons on our Parks and Rec and they are non-voting members because they don't live in Hope Mills. But I understand that they have been on your commission for a long time. And what I'm asking is, if, let's just say, Mr. Green leaves, the person that would take his place, are you saying that they would have voting rights? Or are you saying going forward, they would have to be a Hope Mills resident in order to have voting rights?
The commission's recommendation was these two individuals have voting rights on the commission.
The position itself.
The position itself.
Liaison itself, the position itself.
The position itself. The VFW and American Legion Liaisons. That's, that's.
So we're voting on a position?
We're voting on the position.
It's just that we don't, we don't do that for every committee. So we have to be prepared that, you know, we treat all committees equal. Well, I mean, they probably feel that way about theirs as well.
It is, they're just two organizations running in unison, the two-year cycle of our committees. I mean, what happens, do they have annual elections or biannual elections?
What, the committee?
The.
Are you talking about the?
The VFW 10630.
Oh, they're voted in each year.
Every year.
Yeah, each year.
So they vote in somebody new. I mean, we've got new committees coming in next year, of course. Say the following year, is there change in officers? Would the new officer be the liaison, like in 2020, say?
Well, each one of these two, it's up to the general membership of the organization who represents the organization on the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Who might be that liaison.
Yeah. But it's, we're looking at the position itself, the liaison. That's, that's the recommendation from the commission, is the liaison.
Would you like to recognize Mr. Mitchell?
I would.
From that committee?
Thank you, Mayor. The chair of the commission.
We are talking about the post and its separate position. The individual cannot come up and speak and represent himself. He will have to represent the will of the VFW and the American Legion. That individual cannot bring his or her own personal feelings or agenda to the Veteran Affairs Commission to discuss those issues. We will vote collectively. We will decide on what needs to be discussed and how it will be discussed. But no individual will have that decision on their own without the approval of the members that they are representing. We are not talking about individuals. We are talking about VFW located in Hope Mills, American Legion located in Hope Mills, addresses that involve in every veteran event that we hold here. That's why we are asking for this exception. Because they are fully invested, they are fully involved, and they represent all the veterans in this community and the surrounding areas. That's why we're making this exception. Because we're not like no other commission or committee in that y'all are dealing with now.
Thank you.
From the city of Fayetteville, they don't recognize liaisons or non-citizens.
Dan, have you gotten to this point looking at the general statute for the Veterans Commission?
I have not. I hadn't finished that.
Okay. Because I know that's what you were checking as far, because I know like the Preservation Commission, they're required to be citizens of the Town of Hope Mills. And I don't know where your all's commission stands on the general statute part. And that's what I'm just asking him about.
If it's, yeah, if you're doing a commission, it would need to comply with the statute and the requirements are laid out in the statute. I haven't finished the project of doing that, but.
I think that was next meeting.
Right.
You can have the answers to it next meeting?
I mean, I don't have a, I wouldn't have a problem, as long as it's with the general statute. And I would want you to verify that before.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Unless Commissioner Bellflowers is going to take that motion off, I'll call for the vote.
I would say I'd prefer it be tabled. Just because I would hate, I'd hate to go, "Okay, this," and then you come back on 18th and say, "Oh, by the way, it's not allowed for commission according to the general statute." Then we all wasted time and effort into it. That's the way I feel about it.
Well.
We still have a motion.
I know.
Do we still have a motion?
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
Well, I guess I can withdraw and table until until our attorney.
It's good, next meeting, 18th, I think, right?
Researches the general statute on this motion. So let me, let me do it this way then, Mayor. I'll table the first part, but ask for the motion for the second part regarding the Facebook page. I'll table item number one till the next meeting for the research of the general statute. But I will ask for the motion to approve Facebook page for the Veterans Affairs Commission.
And who's running it?
Town. The town would be the administrator. It would either be, it would be someone of the town manager's appointment. Either Meg or, well, it would be someone the town manager would appoint to have administrative rights.
You have a problem with that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, we have a motion now to just approve the Facebook page run by the town with their input. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Okay, can we put that back on the agenda for February 18th, the other request? Okay, next we have just consideration discussion of Hope Mills Lake Bulkhead Project Funding and Town Standard Contract with M&amp;E Contracting Incorporated. So I guess I'll turn this over to Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting, you all approved to accept the bid along with the alternate and the contingency upon the approval of funding and terms of the contract. Finance Director Drew Holland researched just about every state agency entity for any sort of grant that this would apply to or would be, we would be able to apply for. There are no such grant opportunities and it does not satisfy the bank's collateral requirement. So therefore, we cannot borrow money against it. So the alternative for funding would come from the town's general fund. If the board chooses to approve, moving forward and approve the contract, budgetary adjustments can be made in order to have the lowest impact on fund balance as possible.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and just make the motion to authorize the town manager to execute a contract with M&amp;E Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $483,946. That's my motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just unlike private industry, we pay cash for something, we can't go back and tap that equity later like a private industry, I suppose. So if our building's paid off, we can't so-called refinance or tap equity like in this building here, uh, to get long-term debt, to do things like this. Is that correct? Am I correct?
Well, if you, if you're speaking in terms of the Bulkhead, the Bulkhead's really not a considered an asset.
This is one of my large corporations, I tell them to leverage another asset, finance it for 30 years or 20 years, or whatever, get long-term money, and you end up saving cash flow and debt service. But I don't know that we can do that as a municipality. So when we pay cash for something, we've forgone that opportunity to leverage assets. So if we pay cash for a fire truck, or a car, or this building, it can never be borrowed on again. That borrowing opportunity is only at the front end. Is that correct?
Drew, do you wanna answer that, as, in terms of?
As far as secured loans I'm talking about.
Right, the process of levering another asset for collateral, usually you have to have some type of improvement or borrowing need to go along with that. So if we were to take, for instance, do a major renovation here at Town Hall, we wanna add the Bulkhead to it. Then we'd have to find a bank that's okay with using the Town Hall as collateral, because the Town Hall would be worth more than what the renovation would cost, and we could add the Bulkhead in. But we don't, right now, don't have any other major types of funding that we're looking for borrowing on to combine.
Can we borrow on, on an unsecured basis, or not?
LGC doesn't like that.
They don't like it?
Cause they would have to approve that type of financing and, and they would...
Okay.
Probably not approve that. They would say, find something that you're actually improving to use as collateral.
Yeah, that's a big variance between public and private funds. Okay.
And I have to say this, strictly because I have to say it. Had we had the boardwalk there, is there not grant funding that would, could have been received or applied for, for a boardwalk which would move people and make it accessible to senior citizens?
I, I...
There he is.
I'm not sure.
There he is. Because it, it would be, it would be improving our recreational opportunities for more citizens, and it would be, it would be. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve spending $483,946, and this would come from our fund balance. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing any opposed? All in favor? All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor. Next, we have discussion of decluttering all town properties of periodicals.
And, Madam Mayor, this is, and Board of Commissioners, this is more or less just a item of, just to let you all know that this has become a problem, and I've had some complaints, and so we're just going to declutter, so to speak, and organize things a little bit differently, and just offer one, one issue of periodicals. If that's okay with you all, just as an informational item, just wanted to let you all know that that's what we were doing.
Okay, do we need, you need a motion for that, or just is that okay with the board, that she continues decluttering?
What does that include doing? Any pickup of furniture and stuff sitting along the streets, is that including that?
No, 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 sir. This is the, the, the items that are displayed for informational purposes and that kind of thing.
So is that right with the board? Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is discussion of Tier One status. And the reason that I asked to put this on the agenda is I did not want a day to go by that I did not bring back good information to the board. I was invited and attended Mayor Colvin's Tier One discussion, and in that, the Department of Commerce came along with representatives from different planning departments. And the reason for this is the designation of Tier One changes the way things look for us in Cumberland County, and it also changes the way things look for us in Hope Mills. What the Tier One designation does is that we were in Tier Two, and how they design, or how they pick what tier you fall into, 40 counties fall in Tier One, 40 in Tier Two, and 20 in Tier Three. We fell into Tier One, which is the lowest impoverished group. It's because we have a high unemployment rate, our population growth has not been such that it has sustained our assessed property. And then again, the other thing that's important is that we have the highest number of foster children in Cumberland County. We have in, we have been recognized, and right now we have nearly 900 foster kids. We've also established the fact that our schools, even though we do have people moving here to go to school here, that our schools need to do a better job, because right now, more than fi, more than a fifth of those foster children will become homeless. Only 58% of them will have a high school degree by the time they're 19, and fewer than 3% over age 25 will earn a college degree. The other thing that's, that's important to, to know is that we do have a tremendous number of homeless in Cumberland County. Now, we went to this meeting to find out information, and also to, it felt like you're getting gloom and doom while you were there. But that's, sidebar to this is that by putting us in that Tier One designation, what they now do is it opens us up for funding, different types of funding that we've never been eligible for before. And the reason for that is they want us to get out of that Tier One. They want us to move back to Tier Two or to Tier Three. So we're now eligible for things and monies that we've never been eligible for before. It also wants to make sure that we do things in our, in, in Hope Mills or in Cumberland County for job development, and they also want to do some things to improve our workforce, so that Federal Technical Community College was there, Federal State was there. The Department of Commerce actually spoke and gave us some ideas of things that we could do as a county. The reason why I'm bringing that to you is, fast forward to Friday, to the Mayor's Coalition Meeting. At the Mayor's Coalition Meeting, we were, again, talked about what it means to be in that category. I'm gonna give our board members at this time, and this is hot off the press, but what this is, is some non-economic development programs using this classification. And I did get those run off for everyone else. I apologize that it wasn't brought before the meeting, but I have been dealing with other things. The reason why I think this is important is grants that weren't available for us, all of a sudden now we fit into those categories because of our Tier One classification. Also, you'll notice that some of these things, they're non-economic programs that are available, but you can see where some of the, for instance, I'm trying to find one that would jump right out at you. A good one that we could use. There's one in here on museums. Natural Culture Resources, Science Museum Grants, Other Museum Grants. It provides operational support eligible museums across North Carolina. Awards are given to eligible applicants based on criteria set forth by state. Being in Tier One, you're up to $75,000 that we can apply for. So the reason why I bring this to your attention is that we've got some more things that we can start looking at by this designation, and also as we meet, Mayor Colvin, who is heading up the concern for Cumberland County along with the county commissioners, the goal would be to get more reasons that we could use this to our advantage. Because really, it, it doesn't sound good when you hear all the reasons why we fall into Tier One, but to get us out of Tier One is where you're gonna open up doors for funding. So I just bring that to your attention, and, and also let you know that as we move forward, the Federal Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation is gonna be looking at how we can seek funding for different types of economic development. So as you mentioned, 295, that was also mentioned on our agenda, that we start now planning on how we can open up that roadway for investment, investors, because again, we can partner with getting some funding for things that would bring jobs to Hope Mills, and also things that would open up opportunities for our students. And we do have, with the three major high schools here with some innovative programs already, but you can look at some things that they might even do more. So there's a lot, I think, coming away from the meeting, especially with the Department of Commerce, I came from the meeting thinking that, that there's some things we can do with this. So I bring that to the board's attention, but I think, again, this would have to be something our town manager and Mr. Holland would delve more into what areas we would want to look at. But I do know everybody there at that meeting was eager to find out how they could advantage this also. So that, I bring that to your attention. And the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention along those same lines is that they did show, and when we're talking about the new business out there, and I know the conversation was in reference to roadways, I do have the most recent, and it looks like that Camden Road and that intersection is probably gonna look in the neighborhood of 2019 and 2025. And so what's happening is, it's on the boards, but as far as when it's gonna happen, that is unknown. So when your questions you were asking about that business, all of that's playing a part now. It's causing Cumberland County to advance quicker because of, again, this designation is Tier One. Next, we have our item I, and that was put on there from Commissioner Legg in reference to workshop agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I finished a meeting prior to this meeting with the Festival Committee, and they would like to go on the workshop agenda to possibly request funding to help with some of the projects that they've, they got to do. So I'd like to make a motion that we add consideration of funding for the Festival Committee to the...
To the Budget Workshop?
Budget Workshop Agenda.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, Commissioner, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Legg, well, you have an itemized list of what items they would like to have funding for?
I have...
At the Budget Retreat?
Oh, at the regular retreat?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not asking for them tonight.
I have a pamphlet tonight that shows some of it, but, uh, Mr. Mitchell may have something more up to date for funding. The pamphlet will help with a lot of it.
Okay. Yeah, just an itemized list, you know, when we get to, to the Budget Retreat for consideration.
Okay.
Cause in the past, it's been all donations, you know, to get some of the stuff to do, the, like the cardboard boat race and stuff like that. It's been donations that have supported all of that, so...
Sponsorships.
Yeah, sponsorships. They have a sponsorship program too.
Yeah.
That's in the, in the pamphlet that I have. I'll hang on to that for the Budget Workshop.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll make that inform the...
That'd be most helpful for us.
Okay.
And we put that on the Budget Workshop.
Okay, so we need, he did make a motion, so all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next thing we have on our agenda is a manager's report. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. I'm pleased to let you all
know that the fitness room at the Parks and Rec Center has been opened. Lake Concession Stand, Brower Park, Big T's and Herring Park Roofing, the roofing contractor began the Recreation Center roof on January the 30th. They will be moving to the Lake Concession Stand next. The Trade Street Museum location, staff continues to work on the building as time allows. Odom Roofing Quote for Metal Roof had, was received today, February the 4th, to be placed on the February 18th agenda for consideration. Public Works Director Don Cisco has met with Design to Build Architecture, and they are developing a preliminary drawing for the Trade Street House. Schnabel Engineering completed their inspection of the dam on January the 17th, and the winter survey was conducted on January the 30th. The Fountain Lane House, we're waiting on the hazardous material mitigation quote in order to proceed with demolition. The golf course, staff is working on completing washout repair to the lower cart path. The project of hauling the storm debris from the golf course should be completed this week. North Carolina Emergency Management has notified the town that 4310 Booker Place has been selected to move forward in the hazard mitigation buyouts for Hurricane Florence. The town will be working with the owners to get the proper documentation returned to secure funding. Cumberland County Emergency Management contacted us last week to inform us that the homes on hazard mitigation buyout for Matthew are now being processed by the contractor hired by the county. Due to the high number of homes requesting mitigation funding, the county processed all mitigation through their engineering firm, from this event in an effort to help the municipalities and the residents. On Friday, Jan, January the 25th, and I've reported this to you all in, in an email, but I felt that since this goes on the Facebook page, and this is also a public meeting, this would be a good opportunity to let the citizens know about the meeting with DOT and representatives of Cumberland County School regarding the flooding issue. So, excuse me if this is repetitive for you all, I apologize. On Friday, January the 25th, we had the meeting in reference to the flooding issues around Seaway and Collier Elementary School, Rockfish Road, Summer Drive, and Dever Circle. In attendance were Richie Hines from NC DOT, Joe Desiremore Community, Cumberland County, Cumberland County Schools, Dale Crawford of Crawford Design Company representing the schools, Jeffrey Brown, Cumberland County, Don Cisco, Public Works Director, Beth Brown, Stormwater Administrator, Tyler Riddle, Stormwater Technician, and myself. Commissioner Bellflowers was also in attendance. We discussed a number of various options and ideas to help alleviate some of the flooding issues. Richie Hines indicated that the Hydraulics Department has plans to review that area to try to find a temporary solution to help. Mr. Hines is reaching out to the Hydraulics Department and will try to facilitate reviewing the area sooner rather than later. Mr. Hines thought that he should have some answers within the next 30 days. And in the meantime, the school's architect engineer will be reviewing several possible solutions and working with our Stormwater Department in order to meet again in 30 days so that we can begin the implementation process. It does appear that all parties are willing to come back to the table and come up with a temporary solution, including NC DOT. Following that next staff meeting, we will then bring back the possible scenarios for solutions to the Board of Commissioners at a public meeting, and the residents can be invited, invited at that time. I will keep you informed when we schedule our next meeting. Following the conference call that I had last fall with representatives of Benchmark Planning, Cumberland County Manager Amy Cannon, and Cumberland County Assistant County Manager Tracy Jackson, we decided that we would work towards creating some type of memorandum of understanding and/or a possible technical review committee comprised of staff to work together on the areas where the county and the town have different requirements concerning stormwater streets and building inspections. Since the county has hired a new inspections coordinator, as, and is now in the process of hiring a new planning director, we have decided that we will make, wait to meet again once the new planning director has been hired and is able to have input into the process. This past week, NC DOT completely replaced the junction box for the storm drain and repaired the road on Main Street in front of the Hope Mills Lake. Public Works Department has ordered no parking signs for town property all along the front of the Parks and Recreation Center and Town Hall. We've got school parking, people that are dropping off and picking up their children, and it's... We've got school parking, people that are dropping off and picking up their children, and it's become a big issue. Once the signs have been installed, the police department may begin enforcing the no parking. The new heating and air conditioning unit for a Town Hall building is scheduled to be installed the week of April the 1st. And at that time, we will have no heat, no heating and no air conditioning. So, let's hope we don't have a early heat wave for spring. I have formed a staff committee for Art and Culture. We're calling it the Art and Culture Committee, that is working on plans to implement a monthly farmer's market this spring. Additional information to come once details have been worked out. And in addition to the farmer's market, we have several ideas for other community events in the future. And those events wouldn't necessarily be under Parks and Rec, but it would be in conjunction with Parks and Rec, kind of like the food truck rodeos are right now. Speaking of food truck rodeos, the food truck rodeos will start back Thursday, April the 4th, and details to come at a later date. The spring session of the Town of Hope Mills Citizens Academy is scheduled to begin on Tuesday, April the 2nd and run through May the 21st. Graduation will take place at the Regular Board of Commissioners Meeting on Monday, June 3rd. We have already begun advertising and soliciting for applicants as of today. Our spring cleanup event is scheduled for Saturday, May the 4th. And more details with that will come in the future. And the Town of Hope Mills Wellness Fair is scheduled for Thursday, May the 23rd. And that is my manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have community liaisons. And we'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell and Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah, I believe it was last month we toured the parish house and Trade Street museum sites. And I just had a good session, basically a walk-in workshop with the elected and the Preservation Commission members. So, we've got a workshop scheduled for the 13th. Think to make some decisions about the parish house and other issues. I don't know that we have much else. We just talked about other than upfitting the museum at some point.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, Lake Advisory Committee.
We haven't had one this month, but I'd like to ask Ms. Wery, did they have one last month? So, we haven't had one yet. Have we got our committees set up yet? I mean, our committees, but our officers? No. Who does the agenda? Is there any way I can get a copy of it?
No.
Boy, get an agenda, can I get a copy of it, please?
Whoever, whoever the chair, I don't know that they've Yeah, I don't think they have elected one, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, Commissioner Legg with the Appearance Committee and the Festival Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Unfortunately, I was sitting in a board meeting here last week, or two weeks ago, when we had the Appearance Committee meeting, so I was unable to attend that. So, I'm sorry, I can't report on anything. As far as the Festival Committee, there's not going to be a celebration in the springtime. The celebration's going to be August 24th and 25th. Had my notes mixed up. And the reason for that is because of the uncertainty of where the lake will be closed down or or any of that because of the construction of the possible, possible construction of the bulkhead. So, they didn't want to schedule it down there if it's going to be closed down. And the Easter Sunrise Service, in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department, will be held here April the 21st. I didn't get a time on that. Mr. Mitchell, is that 7:00?
For the sunrise service? What time, Parks and Rec, what time you know me, 7:00 and 1:00?
Yeah, usually by sunrise, about 7:00.
Anyway, stay tuned for the time. That's all I have on those, on those two committees.
Okay, Commissioner Larson, Parks and Rec.
We covered mine on Tab 9.
Commissioner Bellflowers, Veterans Committee and Rulak.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Rulak meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 21st at the Hilltop House, and I'll be attending that. The Veterans Affairs Commission, as previously noted, met last week on January 24th. They had a couple items, and they've already been addressed tonight. The other things, it's a Veterans Outreach Day that the commission is looking for. It's either going to be May 3rd or 10th. And that'll be at the VFW Post 10630. I think it's going to be the 3rd. I think that's where we've centered on. And there's a tremendous amount of interest for that because we haven't had that in our community in quite some time. And we're putting that together now, and at the next meeting, it should be finalized exactly what agencies will be coming to that. The new officers for the committee is Greeley Mitchell is the new chair, Jim Blevins is the new vice chair, Jim Morris is the secretary and the PAO for the commission. And that was due to Ron Marley stepping down his chair. And from his wife, Donna, has resigned from the committee. So, from the commission, so new officers were elected by the commission. There was other items, they would like to do a quarterly report to the board of events from the Veterans Commission as well, and that's going to be by the chair. So, that'll be forthcoming to the board from one of the meetings when the chair is ready to present a quarterly report of the Veterans Affairs Commission. Let's see, what else we have here? They also talked about vision and goals for this year with a mission statement of going forward of what this year's going to look like in conjunction and in concert with Heroes Homecoming Committee that is upcoming as well. And that's about to get kicked up as well again for this year, looking at Veterans Day. I think that's about it, yeah, it is. One, nope, one other. There was a lot of discussion about selection of Veteran of the Year from the community program. And that, those guidelines is being worked on by the committee, by the commission members. And that'll be discussed at the February Veterans Affairs Commission meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I want just to let you know also that I was invited to the visit to the new 911 Call Center that Coman County has purchased or leased. It's the building that is, it already, it looks and appears that you could just go in and start having the call center. They're very fortunate, it was a DoD building. And it has a fenced in, very safe, very secure, and enough space that people could, in the case of emergency, emergency services could actually go there. The city of Fayetteville was also there. I was invited because Hope Mills, again, partners with Coman County for 911. But this will be, once Fayetteville signs on, this will be for all of Coman County, a 911 Call Center. And they're already starting, looking at hiring additional people to work there. But the facility is just going to be so much better than that small space they have at the courthouse that didn't even have windows. This has windows and separate offices, and technology is already there.
Where is it located, Mayor?
It's behind Stein Mart. It's on the corner of the, it's directly behind Stein Mart. You can't miss it because it looks like a fortress. But it was used for Department of Defense.
Yeah, probably there, the corner of Raven Hill and Executive?
Yes.
Okay.
It's down, it's down closer to Hillcrest. I should know the address, but I don't. But it was very nice to be invited and get to the tour. The Sheriff's Department was there to express how excited they were. The county commissioners actually made, you know, had the program. Next, we have staff comments. Anything, no?
I do have one more item. Fire Department has just texted me that there was a large hydraulic fluid spill on the railroad tracks off of Johnson Street, starting from Main Street trestle and stopping at the buildings on trade. And CSX will be there tomorrow to begin the cleanup. Don't know any other details right now.
Nothing toxic.
Just a hydraulic fluid. But if you see CXX, CSX in the area, that's what they're doing, is cleaning up that spill.
Are they closing it? Are they closing the, what do you call it? Will you cross over the tracks, are they closing it down?
I don't believe so, he hasn't said anything about closing it. So, I don't, I don't believe so, but that's all he sent me, so I'm not sure.
You have anything? All right, I'll start with Commissioner Legg this evening. Official comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be very short here. Like, thank everyone for coming in this evening. For all you guys in the press area. I'd like for you to know that opening day of baseball here this year is April 13th. And I'm proud to be part of a group that's going to be dedicating the building at Broward Park to Gary Dove. And the Hope Mills Youth Association has declared that Gary Dove Day. So, I invite everyone that can to attend there. He's a very deserving man.
You have to wear a Duke ball cap, right?
They might have put it away with him. If he was here, he'd wear it. Thank you.
And if you could add to that, if we could do a proclamation from the town, that that would be Gary Dove Day on April 13th. That way, we could have a formal presentation from the town, too.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
I'm good, I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bellflowers?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming and for those who spoke tonight. I wanted, I wanted to redress one thing, though. And I saw that one of the Board of Directors from the YMCA was here, Molly Dunn. Even though we're going to wait until after the comprehensive plan comes back to us on the 9th of March, it doesn't prohibit the YMCA from forming their own feasibility study committee. That organization, I was going to recommend that to her and her Board of Directors, is that the YMCA should form their own committee since they're looking at, since they're the ones that want to lean forward with the Aquatic Center. I, just a recommendation to them. They own property there, they own 20 acres there. They wouldn't need our permission to develop an aquatic center there. Just a, just a suggestion to them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I forgot to mention something earlier. You were talking about your Youth Leadership Committee. Have we ever gotten a inventory of what we have in the storage unit as far as historical items?
I've been to see it. So, I, but there's not a
There hasn't been an inventory list or anything?
I don't have a copy of one.
Well, is there any way we could get, let the people know that if they have anything, that they have items that belong to the town or something to
Page and the
And they could have them in their home or someplace and bring them in.
On the website.
And then let the youth association, give them so many days and let the youth association do the inventory on it.
I think we need to, we have to remember, they're a commission, not a committee. So, I think everything needs to be approved by their commission.
A lot of taxpayers don't want to know what kind of artifacts that belong to Hope Mills.
I think it's a good idea, but I'm just saying, I think the commission needs to approve that.
Can they do that, Lisa?
They can talk about it.
We'll talk about it probably in person.
Yeah. Good discussion subject for the 13th.
Yeah, and then just let me know what, what they decide.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I'm pretty good. I haven't heard from the Fayetteville Coman County Economic Development Corporation as far as any meetings.
Yes, we reached out, we reached out to them, and we've not heard back, but to my knowledge, they've not had a meeting.
Do they meet monthly, quarterly?
I believe it was going to be quarterly.
Or quarterly meeting, okay. Please let me know.
As soon as we hear back, yes, sir.
Appreciate all the comments tonight. Some things just frankly aren't true. As it was said earlier, we had no discussion in a public meeting. We were not recognized by the Parks and Rec Committee. We sat in audience. So, there was no discussion. That was not a, that was not a regular meeting or a joint meeting. It was, we simply advertised that there could be a quorum. Am I correct, Town Manager Adams?
Yes, sir.
All right. And as far, I guess, Commissioner, I mean, former Commissioner Collins didn't know that we just approved moving forward with the public safety building. He seemed to be confused about that. But we realized the need for the public safety building. He mentioned we hadn't taken any action, well, we have. So, just a few things here and there that I found disturbing. But we'll get through that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to also let the board know that beginning this year, February 1st was the first, our town clerk, Ms. Starling, is attending the Mayor's Coalition Meetings with me. The clerks from the other communities, we had two other clerks there. But she is, has been invited, and all clerks have been invited to attend, so I appreciate the fact she came. And if you ever have any questions, you can feel free to ask her. She's a very good listener and very good representative of our town. Any other comments? If not, I'd too appreciate everyone being here this evening. And we now have a motion.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Make a motion to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 to discuss personnel matters and North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to protect attorney-client privilege related to personnel matters.
Have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll go back to the conference room. And we'll beg your patience, we'll be back as quick